All right. Calling to order the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. And first on the agenda, we have public comment. Do we have everybody, anybody in the crowd? All right, all right, seeing as that we don't have anybody here for public comment. We will move to the public hearing for Little Spoon Outdoor Dining. Good evening, welcome, welcome. Aparra?
Yes.
Aparra, Trunprapa is the manager of Little Spoon and we're going to be talking about our outdoor dining license. And I will let you kind of take the floor from here and share with us whatever you would like to, and we will listen. Appreciate it.
Yeah. We would like to have the 18 seats for five table in front of the restaurant. So the reason I would like to have it because I have some customer that they call us and do you have the outdoor seating? When we, when we say we don't have it, so they say, okay, next time. And I feel like my customer would like to enjoy the weather in the summertime too. That's why I think I should have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. As far as paperwork and everything like that, town manager, are things in order? Everything's in order, thank you so much. So the outdoor dining in what you're looking to do, and we can all agree that we've definitely been in favor of outdoor dining and what it's been to, been able to provide to our community and the positive, the positive outcome from that. And I will open up to the board for any kind of discussion if anybody has anything. Yes, Ms. Row.
Hi, I love your restaurant.
Thank you.
And, and just in your application, it asks, are you requesting to have outdoor dining and public parking spaces? And it's checked off, yes, but on the, um, the plan that I saw, it didn't look like any of your.
Yeah, I, I think I made the mistake. I talked with my idea about it.
Okay, super. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Row. Anyone else?
Yeah, quick question.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, on the map, you have 30 inches as an inner aisle. Is that for handicap accessibility?
We have 36, we're gonna have 36, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just wondering, why does it have to be against the building? Could it be on the sidewalk side? I mean, could not someone use the sidewalk?
Yeah, that.
To access a table?
Did, I think that enough space for the sidewalk, we, we have.
Correct, so you got the sidewalk covered. But I just wondered about the handicap accessibility route of 36 inches against the building. Couldn't that be moved to the sidewalk side?
That challenge does come in because there does need to be a barrier between the service space and the non-service space.
Okay.
And that is per ABCC requirements since as for the next item, there needs to be a separated area between the service area and the non-service area to make sure that alcoholic service can be effectively met as per state regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Did anyone else from the board have any other comments? I know that this is a public hearing, so I would like to open this up and see if anyone's in the audience or online that has anything to say. All right, be it as it may, um, do we have a motion?
Should I move at the board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for PM Store Corporation LLC doing business as Little Spoon?
Have a second. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, that moves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We got one more. So now the, yep, we have one more public hearing. Yep, so the next. Uh, the next agenda item we have is a public hearing for alteration of premises for wine and malt license in the restaurant for Little Spoon. And then you have any comments about that?
Uh, no.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I just, the question is, so you're looking to serve alcohol outside as well as inside, right?
Right, right.
This is required as a second step to make sure that you can do that. So I understand that that's probably what you want to do and.
Yeah.
And look forward to, look forward to visiting your premises for food and drink, so.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Does anyone else on the board have any comments? Oh, again, this is a public hearing, so I will see if there's anyone online that has anything or anyone in the room. All right, I believe that we're good to go. Do we have a motion?
Should I move at the board vote to approve the amendment for alteration of premises application received from PM Store Corporation LLC doing business as Little Spoon? And so approved for the amendment application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you so much for your time, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the appointments and consents.
Oh, yes, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, do we have any discussion from the board about the consent agenda?
Just congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you, thank you so much, I'm looking forward to it. All right, uh, we'll come to the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent has been moved. All right, next up on the agenda, we have the application to transfer all alcohol license at Cook. And then we have, we can call you up right over here, we have the council, we have Ian Hedges, we have Deborah Paula. Then we have Caesar and Edison Gutierrez. You guys can come up if you want to, come on up. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here and definitely look forward to learning more about what we're going to be doing here and the transfer. And yeah, Mr. Hedges, I will turn it over to you.
Sure, so good evening, everyone. With me here tonight, we have Caesar and Edison Gutierrez, uh, they're the two partners of the restaurant. And Deborah Paula, um, she is the proposed license manager. All three have significant experience owning or operating restaurants in Massachusetts over 25 years. Previously, they owned a restaurant in Brookline called Brothers Tavern, Brothers Restaurant. And they currently operate Gaetano's in Stonem, which was recently voted Stonem's Best Restaurant for 2022. And then in, in terms of the, the restaurant itself, uh, no changes to the concept, uh, no changes to hours, floor plan, anything like that, no physical alterations. Largely just a change in management for now. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. So what I will do, I will open up to the board for any questions or comments. Town manager, is everything in order?
Yes, it is.
Everything's in order, good to hear.
Can I just ask?
Yeah, Ms. Row.
Do you have, I mean, can you tell us a little bit about your background? Have you worked at these other establishments or?
I've been an employee at Gaetano's Restaurant for 28 years.
Oh, wow, okay.
So I've done everything except cook.
Okay.
So yes, I have a lot of experience.
That's where I stay away from too is cooking.
Yeah.
So 28 years, that's amazing.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
When's this venture going through? Did it go through or is it?
Yeah, once the ABCC approves it, we'll have a closing after that, so I would anticipate probably sometime mid-November, mid-early November.
Any other questions from the board? All right, do we have a motion?
Yes.
It was a public hearing.
Oh, oh, I didn't think it was.
Sorry.
They usually are.
Okay, yes, public hearing, so we open it up for a comment from anyone in the crowd?
Yeah.
Or online? Okay. Seeing as I don't see any hands raised or anybody here. Now.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Section 12 All Alcohol Restaurant License Transfer Application submitted by Seed Corp LLC doing business as Cook, including the appointment of Deborah Paula as manager of record and so approved for the application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I can't see him.
Seeing as there are none, I will come to the vote, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Love your restaurant.
Thank you.
So appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Have a good one.
You too.
Made years, love that.
Yep.
All right.
I know, it's shocking.
Well, next on the agenda item, we have our legal counsel for discussion. We have Kate Fitzpatrick and then.
Notice for 6:15.
Oh, sorry, no. And Nick Anastopoulos. And Anastopoulos, oh, I was trying, sorry about that, Nick.
Mr. Vice Chair, I was gonna say Nick and Anastopoulos, our labor counsel is here. We've been working together with Labor Council for more than four years, I think now, it's been, it's been a while. And since you were having a conversation about town council, we thought it would, and we had town council Chris Heep in. And probably nobody has met Nick. We thought maybe he would come in and introduce himself and just talk a little bit about what you do for the town, Nick.
Sure, I guess it's a good thing when you don't see your lawyer too often. Maybe a little bit longer, I think we've lost track of time with COVID. Good evening, my name's Nick Anastopoulos, I'm a partner at Myrick O'Connell. My practice is exclusively labor and employment, both public and private sector. There's about 65 lawyers in our office, but 10 or 12 of us practice exclusively in labor law. I met Kate a long time ago at some MMA event and I've been, you know, fortunate enough to not to represent the town now for, you know, this period of time, but you know, not too often, I don't think, you know, I think the town. You know, Kate has great labor relations in general compared to some of my other communities. I always joke, I don't want to be the highest paid employee, you know, in a municipality and, and, and that's not the case here. From time to time, Kate may have a very discreet specific question, but she's got a great team around her, you know, and I sort of went necessary way in a little bit, but it's, uh, I think it's been a positive relationship and, you know, I appreciate the opportunity and her trust and her team's trust and the town's trust with the work. So.
Absolutely.
So in some communities, the Labor Council will conduct the actual bargaining and we haven't done that for a very long time. So we tend to rely on Nick at the end to, you know, review our documents. Employment related matters that come up that are more complicated and on occasion there'll be grievances, you know, maybe an arbitration, fairly rare.
I think we have one pending, but that's not a bad track record. We haven't been to the JLMC, we haven't had unfair labor practice charges. Again, I think it speaks volumes to the overall relationship.
The JLMC is, if you don't.
It's finding arbitration for police and fire.
Okay.
Which we haven't been to since 1994, I would point out.
Been a couple of years, yeah, it's been a, it's been a minute.
It's been a while.
Yeah, absolutely. Does anyone from the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say thank you for being behind the scenes, so to speak, attorney and stuff. It's like, uh, I know these are very complex matters and we are lucky, like you said, to have terrific labor relations and Kate's at the head of that, so. But when you're there, I know you're there for a call and great advice and a lot goes into this, so thanks for coming before us.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Anyone else?
I was just hoping you could tell us a little bit more about your firm, how, like, how many, how many are you?
So, uh, I think it's about 65, so many attorneys now. And so again, there's about 15 of us that do labor and employment, wage and hour work. There's a corporate department, a land use department, corporate bankruptcy department, domestic relations department, if anybody's looking for a divorce.
No.
So, and so we have a Worcester based firm, I think it's a hundred some odd years in Worcester, Westboro office and a Boston office across from South Station. So sort of geographically you have offices convenient. I am partial to going to community libraries, I stopped today at yours and very different than the Dewey Decimal System. Charging docs and everything else, so it's interesting. I'm fascinated by local libraries, but that's a complete aside.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we don't have a library at our office anymore because everything's online.
Right, right.
Read up that space, that's right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go on, Mr. King.
I think between cities, towns and public agencies, probably off the top of my head, about 12 to 15 currently. And then the other part of my practice, it's all management side, representing a fair number of colleges and universities, hospitals, manufacturing facilities, particularly in locations that have a union presence or union activity around them.
Thank you. And I just think, you know, kind of echoing what Mr. Riley said about just thanking you for your work and it's been great that I've never met you. I think that's a good thing, but I'm happy we got a chance to interact with you and have you come in now and kind of tell us a little bit about what you're doing and appreciate that.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
They're not here, we can jump ahead. Okay.
We'll just wait a second.
Great.
How you doing, everyone? How's it going?
Dan's not here yet.
Okay, so we'll just go to the next thing until Dan gets here, all right. So we will come back to the Ember Grover Project and we will go to the specials stabilization funds. We have Dave Davis in here, Assistant Town Manager. Nice to see you, Dave.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Nice to see you. So we, um, had this, uh, late item added to your agenda, just to bring the board up to date. As the board may be aware, the town has a number of stabilization funds. Specifically, there are five. There is the General Stabilization Fund, which the town has had for decades. And it's the traditional stabilization fund that monies are put aside for an unforeseen and catastrophic situation where funds would be needed. A few years ago, more than a few years ago, it's coming up on about 15 years or so. The state amended the stabilization fund law that allowed communities to have multiple stabilization funds in order to set aside funds for more designated purposes so people town meeting and citizens would have a better sense of what the funds are for. Needham was one of the early adopters of that concept. And the town established a fund that was called the Capital Improvement Fund, which was meant to, uh, put monies aside in order to have funds available if there was capital equipment or a small building or a facility repair that needed to be addressed, was planned to be addressed. But because of unforeseen circumstances, funds were not available. It was one of the tools that we created as a result of the downturn in the early 2000s that the town actually didn't have sufficient free cash to fund capital items. And it was relying upon, uh, the free cash to basically fund the entire operating budget. A couple of, um, items that one would not want to do is funding recurring expenses with one-time funds. So there was a movement afoot to try to, uh, to end that practice. And the seven, uh, the second part was that we still had needed equipment and needed improvements that had to be done. And the town was forced to go to borrowing for small amounts in order to fund those items. So the purpose of this fund was to ensure that there would be funds aside for those projects that, as I said, that were planned, were needed. And but for the year that they came forward, uh, there were no funds available. As time went on, um, it was certainly understood that the town had been investing a lot of money in its facilities, its new, uh, its town buildings. And, um, there would always be ongoing repairs and improvements necessary to keep those new, uh, facilities that the town has spent hundreds of millions of dollars to build. And we certainly didn't want to see them becoming disrepair as the, uh, buildings that they replaced did by the fact of not having funds. So the town, uh, established the Capital Facility Fund specifically for setting sides fund, again, the same concept as Capital Improvement Fund. And that is to have monies available when there was an important, um, capital repair that needed to be done, but there were insufficient funds. But specifically, uh, looking at the time, if a boiler went, boilers are hundreds of thousands of dollars or roofs. And the several roof projects that the town has had to do have been in the million dollar range. And then the, the next phase was more specific. The town had an improvement to its fields through mostly private donations. And that was the facilities at Memorial Park and Defazio in which there was a, a private donations in excess of $6 million to help pay for those improvements. And then, uh, and I'll lay a carpet down for the playing fields. Well, it was certainly understood that the carpet would have to be replaced about every 10 years and though, and that would be expensive. So, uh, we established the Athletic Facility Fund for the purposes starting to set funds aside specifically for when it came time to replace the, uh, the carpet. And, um, in other facilities, as you may recall, we took draws in terms of funding the replacement of the carpet a few years ago. We also intentionally set funds aside for the Memorial Park Building and that facility. And, and the funds came out just as planned. And then the most recent, uh, fund that was created was the Debt Service Stabilization Fund for the purpose of trying to manage our debt burden if we were looking at years that potentially we could exceed the 3% limit by the Select Board's policy on debt within the levy limit. So it was just to bring the board up to date as to the, uh, the five funds. There'd been questions from time to time from town meeting, what, what, and even the board themselves. What should the targets be? The targets were set at one time and certainly inflation has come in, we've made more investments in capital facilities. And, uh, and the Finance Committee was also mined and there was a working group, the Finance Committee, that, uh, met with us a few years ago with the intention of updating our stabilization fund targets and goals. We had reached, uh, an agreement in concept, then COVID hit. And basically everything was pushed aside and for a few years, um, uh, all was left lingering and, and no actions were being taken. We met again, uh, we, we discussed in the spring about meeting again with a group of the Finance Committee, approached the chair and the chair agreed and put together a subcommittee from the Finance Committee and we met this summer. We look at what we had discussed a few years ago and reached, um, uh, some points of agreement in terms of going forward, specifically the Capital Improvement Fund, the first of the dedicated funds. As I mentioned, that was created for the purpose of, uh, capital equipment and improvements to buildings and facilities for repairs. Since the town created the Capital Facility Fund, it seemed duplicative to have two funds making the same references. So we're looking to update, uh, and this is an administrative action effectively, update the language with our Capital Improvement Fund to be specifically for, uh, capital equipment investments. The purpose is still intended to be, uh, when there is equipment that needed, was planned to be replaced, has to be replaced. And, uh, there is the townsend a, a tight fiscal time that's unable to fund those obligations. The, in terms of what would be an appropriate ceiling or target for this fund, we determined that probably the, uh, what is the cost of two high value assets or vehicles that the town may have to purchase and that would be specifically a ladder truck and a fire engine. The combined cost of those two items right now is approximately $3 million. So, um, but that seemed to be a reasonable target that the members of the Finance Committee and us were receptive to. The other beauty of this is, of course, as the cost unfortunately, that weapon goes up, the ceiling would also be amended accordingly. Just so the boards aware, as of, um, uh, August, the balance in that fund was 1.1 million dollars. And so with a target of $3 million, we're just at 37% of the proposed target. We, we also talked about sources of funds that could perhaps, uh, be a measure to put funds in there. And one of the, uh, sources, uh, is the sale of surplus equipment since in fact the fund would be used to pay for new equipment. When we sell surplus equipment, uh, perhaps the light amount could be appropriated by town meeting into the, um, into the fund. And, um, then they put it in, uh, perspective in the last, um, five years in terms of the proceeds from the sale of equipment. So far fiscal 2023, just in the first three months, it's been over $88,000 in equipment. In FY 2022, $184,000. And FY 21, $78,000. And FY 20 was $111,000. And I, $81,000, uh, in 2019. So in, in over the five, five years, as you can, uh, see, you're looking close to $400,000 that has been collected by the towns in the sale of proceeds. And the total month it's been put into the fund during that time, $166,000. The next, the Capital Facility Fund, uh, the same concept, not, uh, the definition doesn't need to be changed. It's designed for our public existing town facilities and buildings. But the question is, what would be an appropriate target? And, uh, what we, uh, came up with was using the insured values. We have another third party that makes a determination of the value of the buildings. And of course, it's just the buildings, not the land that's on them, it's the buildings. And, uh, the, um, and we assume that the, an appropriate target for this fund would be 1% of the total insured value of the buildings, not the contents, not the value of the land, but the value of the buildings. And, um, and specifically the, since the fund is dedicated to the general fund buildings, we pulled out the assets, this sewer enterprise fund assets, the water enterprise fund assets. And with that, we have a total insured value of $420 million. So 1% of that would be $4.2 million. And the fund as of August has an $1,930,000 or 46% of that suggested target. Those were the two of the greatest conversation in, and I'm looking to go forward. The Athletic Facility Stabilization Fund, basically the proceeds from, um, uh, a portion of proceeds that the Park and Recreation receives from, uh, playing field fees are, have been contributed to the fund annually based upon a rolling average of the fees collected. And from time to time, there would be appropriations from free cash. We did not see the need to change that level right now, uh, the target of $2 million. But there was a conversation of maybe, uh, giving a, a look at, uh, facilities like the Rosemary Pool that we know there are parts of the Rosemary Pool that are going to need to be replaced and repaired, um, over time. That perhaps we should look at the cost of that, maybe amortize the cost of that and then incorporate that into the formula as well as, uh, perhaps some of our playing fields. The, um, and, and the important thing I forgot to mention on the Capital Facility Fund is the concept of what could be a funding source for the Capital Facility Fund and what, uh, was suggested. And this actually came from a member of the Finance Committee. And what was suggested, and this actually came from a member of the finance committee, is perhaps the, since in our calculations on the use of free cash, what percentage of free cash may be used for the operating budget. We look at the budgetary turnback excluding the turnback from, from the reserve fund in terms of that formula. And it was suggested that perhaps the turnback from the reserve fund, whatever that contribution is to the free cash in the following year, could be the amount that the town could consider appropriating to the fund. Certainly if we have a good winter, meaning in my perspective of good is not too much snow. The, there would be larger turnbacks in those years which we have heavy snow, we have lower turnbacks. But that's certainly one source that could be considered as a way to measure funds going into the capital facility fund. So jump back, talk about the athletic facility improvement fund. And the fourth of the special funds, the debt service stabilization fund, we put that on the table for now. We'll be coming back to the board as well as with the finance committee. When we come with a facility financing plan that will be coming in November. And part of that plan will actually perhaps incorporate the debt service stabilization fund and looking at some new growth revenues that could be dedicated towards the fund. The, the general stabilization fund, the practice has been, and there was not much conversation about it, is basically what's an appropriate ceiling for that. And that would be something, the 3% of the prior year operating budget based upon the, the prior year operating budget of FY 2022 at 195 million dollars. That would put the ceiling for the general stabilization fund at 5.8 million dollars. And we have 4.5 as of August in that fund. So, and last, just a, we will be coming back to the board. Another thing that was delayed because of COVID-19. In fact, I think the last, the next meeting after in-person meetings ended was to be a public hearing on stormwater fees associated with stormwater runoff and such. And one of the components with those fees is to dedicate those to stormwater capital investments, which a special stabilization fund would work. In that, that would be a conversation I would anticipate will be held in the spring next year.
Thank you so much, Dave. I had a couple of questions. So the first one is how soon thereafter are we looking to get to the ceilings? The ceilings that we're trying to reach as far as from, I believe one was 1.9, we're trying to go, or 1.1 to the 3 million. And, and I wrote the other, the 1.9, where we're at, what, 46%? Was for the, okay. And then how, how soon are we looking to get to those ceilings? And say the turnback, say we have more snow. So what is our alternative source, I would say, for funding if we don't get as much back because of the weather or things like that to help get to that, to the ceiling that we're looking for in the specific funds?
There was not a set timeline to get.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure.
It's more of, these are the sources, the funds, they're measurable, we know them. And there's a way to equate that when we have them to put them into the fund.
Okay.
And, and this does require town meeting action, it just doesn't happen automatically. But you, you can see based upon the amounts that I mentioned, it's going to be a good three to five years before we could even be thinking that we're at the ceiling.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I want to open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm so glad that we're revisiting these funds. It's a constant question, I think, from town meeting members. When you present something and you go over the fund or you bring a project to them and why aren't we using that fund for this? And why aren't we using that fund for that? I know there's been some hesitancy in the past of putting money in these funds, but I think it's our best, one of our best financial strategies to do it. And when you look at the old funds, and I remember those were kind of the unforeseen things that you're talking about, right? Okay, the roof goes or we need to replace this. But now we're looking at, so with the athletic facility fund, we're looking at foreseen things. We know the turf's going to be needed, you know? We know now with debt stabilization that we have projects coming up. And now you're talking about stormwater, we know that we're going to have to do something about that. So I think that's a different conversation I'm glad we're having. And I'm happy to put as much money as we can that's practical to, to get to those limits. And I'd like to think of maybe there's like a percentage every year after that to count for a year of inflation or something else that we look to target an increase after we get to that, that cap. But I think it's terrific that we're doing this and we have known needs and this is the way to get money for them. So, thank you.
Thank you for that incredible detail and, and thorough explanation. I love listening to, I learn so much every time, but I, I do, I do want to say that I think one of the conversations that I've been hearing as I've moved through sort of the beginning of this select board adventure is how much maintenance there is to do on our town buildings and town facilities and how, how essential planning for that is. So like Matt, the idea that we have, you know, advanced savings for items that we know are coming, not just emergencies, but knowing that we have planned for maintenance and upkeep. Excuse me, is, is just, it makes me feel very cozy and settled. And know that we're, that we're planning well for our future. And, and again, I just think that the explanation that you've given, these funds I think are, as Matt also said, just confusing to a lot of people. Why are we doing it and what are they all for? So I appreciate the explanation and I'm sure the public does as well.
I feel so much smarter now. On the athletic facilities improvement fund, the one we're just, it's just for the turf. Wasn't there another, there was another item put in there too, right?
It's not just for the turf, that's what was the driving factor created. But we, when that set up, we have funded the turf from it. And we've funded a part of the Memorial Park building project in the area around the Memorial Park building.
Correct, okay. And then possibly Rosemary Pool might be coming, because that's now out of, coming out warranty, right? For the pool?
Yes, we would, that was something to suggest what would be the cost associated with that. Is that something that can be added into the fees? That there's, there's several conversations to be added, including conversation with the Park and Recreation Commission. But it was certainly recognized that's our newest asset that's been invested. And it's not about the warranty, it's just the general expected wear and tear and use. So we, there are, there's certain equipment that's associated with the pool. That's going to have a much shorter life than, than the pool itself. And, and that's what some of the ideas that were tossed around.
Okay, so would these be line items within the fund? I mean, like, there's not a scenario which we would try to be, have to replace the saw, the turf. And we couldn't, because we've sort of spent money on memorial field. Or is it, are we tracking it that way?
It's, it's all part of the plan. I mean, we know in another 10 years, the carpet is going to come out. As you know, in our capital improvement plan, we're already looking out five years. So we know within five years when we're going to have a draw and how much we're going to have to rely upon the fund versus if we happen to have a year that our regular cash in the year could cover the cost. This is meant to try to not have to come up with all the money at once in one year. And that's really the purpose of creating it as a savings plan. But it's part of, in an entire package, it's not exclusive to item one, two, and three.
Okay. And then as far as what Kevin said about that, I know last town meeting, we took out a little bit more, I feel like for parks and recs out of the, out of the fund, I believe, to play for the study, I believe the study for tennis courts or. No, from this. Okay, okay, but I, okay. It was discussed, but we didn't do it, okay, but.
But an important point in completing that down. If you recall, the town did appropriate monies from the fund for the carpet replacement. And the project was completed. And because at that time, a favorable bidding environment, the cost was not as much as anticipated. We did the unused funds from that project. Town meeting did, the select board put an article in the warrant and town meeting did put those remaining funds back into the athletic.
Yes, do recall that. Thank you so much. Anyone else? We appreciate you. Thank you so much for the description and all the detail. And look forward to figure out how we're going to kind of bulk that up a little bit over the years and what we can do to help. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So now we're going to go back one item and go to the Emory Grover project update. And I see we have members of the school committee here. We have Dan Gudekant, Stuart Chandler, and Hank Half, if you want to come on up. Appreciate you all being here tonight.
It's Stuart.
Been here in a while.
It's cozy, it's real cozy. That's just for you, Dan.
I was going to say, this is a new feature of select board meetings. Madam Vice Chair, can we get this for the school committee?
It has, it has.
We got that in kindergarten over at.
It has too many minutes, though.
Way too many, we'll turn it this way. We don't want you to be, we want to give you all the time that you need. So why everybody's here tonight is we have our Emory Grover project team, board and committee members. And they're going to discuss the status of Emory Grover and then town meeting plans. So I will turn it over to Mr. Gudekant.
I will start. Thanks very much. Thanks to all. Good to see all of you. I'm actually going to hand this over to Stuart and Hank. I think where we're, where we're at really is the EG project is, there are kind of two phases to it. One is the, a run, a fix-up, if you will, of Hillside to get it ready and prepared for the school administration staff to move into. And that project is well underway. Really very, just really kind of life safety work is going on there. We're keeping it essentially as the police department left it. The other phase though is the design and now the bidding for the historic renovation of the Emory Grover building. And as you may have heard and from some of the documents you have, we've, we have learned due to labor costs, supply chain issues, inflation, energy, that the cost far exceeded what we anticipated by about four and a half million dollars for the project. P P B C has been discussing that, working that. Got a little bit of good news with some of the filed sub bids, but there's still work ahead to see where that goes. And at the special town meeting, the school committee is requesting with, through you, a request for additional funding to complete the project based on the bids that will be received on October 6th and what is awarded. So I think is that a setup for you to take it from there, because you know the.
We don't do anything more.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, thanks. I'll just give a brief. And as you all know, that the project has been underway for some time and there's cycles, stages of the project. And right now we're in the bidding process of the Emory Grover core part, so what they call the sub bids. We met previously in this, in this forum. There was a question about where the money was and, and what we were seeing in the early design. And there was an ask to compress the stage of the construction design. So as you know, we do feasibility, we do design documents, construction documents, we bid, we build and deliver. Okay, we're in the bid side, but when we last met, we really wanted to try and see what, because we were getting an understanding of the prices and costs is can we compress the construction documents so we could actually get ahead of special town meeting and understand more specifically if we've got a real ask. And I think there's truly a real ask. In, we've done the construction documents to 60%, we've done the bid process, with the exception of the general contracting bid. We just received last week sub bids, so concrete walls, things of that nature, painting, various things. I believe Hank has sent out a tabulation of what that looks like. And just in summary, we're actually pleased, we met as a PVC last night, that the file sub bids came in less than the budget. So that's a good early indication. It's not, it's not, it's not a set in stone number. There's a couple of pieces to, to bring to your attention. One is that within three of the sub bids, file sub bids is a low bidder, G V W. But there's a stipulation to those sub bids, those three sub bids. That is, if they win the general contracting, they will take that sub bid. If they do not win the general contracting, those sub bid, low bids are off the table. So just to give you a perspective and not to cast numbers in stone. But if everything were to go and flow properly from a sub bid perspective, we're about $400,000 under the budget. Okay, we have one other element, which is the elevator. There's been no bid on the elevator. So we've got to have to hold the budget at 345 in that number, but we're still below by 400. If G V W does not win the general contract, and we have to take the next lowest bid, we're sitting at about $200,000 less than the budget. So that gives you a little flavor of where we are. And we actually last night felt pretty good about where we're standing on things. So at this stage of the game, we've got the file sub bids in. We know a little bit of the, the little maneuvers that have to be made once the general contracting, which goes out fairly shortly. We know that the next step in the timeline is hopefully October 11th. We will meet, the PVC will meet. So October 6th is when we hope to get all the general bids in, excuse me, the general contracting bids in. And over a 7, 8, and 9th, the Columbus Day Indigenous Weekend, is that we can hopefully tabulate that and get a good perspective. And hopefully, knock on wood, cross your fingers that the environment is going to move in the direction of the wins of the sub bids and that has come in within budget. But we can't give you anything hard and fast tonight, other than to tell you where we are in the process. We've got the sub bids and what we're starting to see. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Hank?
The filed sub bids represent about 40% of the total cost anticipated. So that means roughly 60% is still unknown. And that 60% typically covers any of the heavy structural steel that goes into it, concrete, exterior site work. So while we, we feel good about certain categories of the filed sub bids, it's still 60% of the, of the final bid is unknown. Just want to make that clear so you, you understand this is, this is a good direction. But we still have to wait until October 6th. And so these, these numbers of the filed sub bids and the two alternates were provided to all the general contractors today through the, through the bid site called, website called Project Dog. And so now they're beginning to put together their, their bids.
Did anyone else have any other comments? Thank you all for being here and thank you for the update. First question I had is, I know that we said that this, you know, right now being potentially between 400,000 and 200,000 dollars underneath budget, which is a good thing. What are the chances that it fluctuates if, if say that that the prices fluctuate up or down, say if we don't get it in by that specific time, the bid by the 6th? Or if we don't hear back from general contractors by then, which I assume we will.
We have to hear.
You have to.
So the bidding process, the bidding process, the bid is what they've provided.
Okay.
There is a little bit of, when the general contractors come in, there could be a little bit of interchange within the sub bids, the filed sub bid categories. But generally speaking, that's where we are. I think that if we stop, the bids would come off the table if we were stopped process. But right now the bids would be held, they have to get us the bids by October 6th.
Okay, can you comment on how many folks are interested? Because there's a sense of the competition.
Yeah, yeah. So all of the filed sub bids are fixed. The only way they can drop out is if they come back to us and say they made a mathematical error on their bid. We have bid bonds. So that those, those bids are fixed at this point. The, there are five pre-qualified general contractors in the, in the local region. We would hope to get five bids, but we've seen other projects where they only get two or three.
Got it.
And the more we get, the more. And the more we get, the more competitive it typically would be.
Okay, and then I said two more questions. I know that we came in under for a few of the things or the sub bids I see here and but they said others were higher, like fire protection and plumbing. We say higher like a little bit or was it far exceeding what we were thinking?
So on the HVAC, that came in about three hundred thousand dollars lower than we had anticipated. And that was probably the one of the largest swings. Electrical was roughly on target, but the fire protection was was two hundred thousand dollars above, almost double what we had estimated. And on the plumbing, it was about seventy two thousand, almost seventy three thousand dollars above what we had anticipated.
Originally, okay.
Yeah, and and many of the others were roughly on target. So we we do see this type of variation. And and that's to be expected in the bidding program.
And one more question I had, I know Ed talked about a little bit as far as in the language of the contract. As far as, you know, completing by due date and what would happen if we didn't complete by that due date or putting that in and not putting that in. I know you can explain a little better than me for the people that are listening, but I think you understand. I don't know if you want to take.
Yeah, we and we talked about that. We spoke about that last time. The question was on the table and a couple of different forums about if we would put a penalty relatively speaking to a date missed. And the PVC had a discussion and agreed not to and actually I think council suggested not to. The risk is that by putting in some constraints in the bidding process for the bidder to win and having constraints like that could deter the bidding and could actually deter from a competitive price. And talking to the experts in the field, we had them in the PVC committee meeting, architects and various and asked them their opinion and seeing other projects. And they had commented that they had not seen much at all in this language that we spoke about. And they said, it's not really, I mean, what are you, what are you going to get for liquidated damages is what we're really talking about. And with liquidated damages to carry to step further, right? If we miss a date, what's liquidated damage? I think it's really just the cover cost of Hillside versus, you know, a massive amount of expenditure around taking another building down because you got to move something around. So the question is, is the trade off of having put liquidated damages in there versus what you actually gain for minimizing the risk? I think we all concluded that there's no benefit. We prefer to have a competitive bidding environment.
If it were a school building, it would be a different story. If we had to move into a date certain September 1, for example. Then that would be a different calculus. But in this case, we we have to hang out Hillside building a little longer. We hang out in Hillside building a little longer.
All right. Thank you all so much. I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. You know, it's upsetting to see this number, but as we said before, it's not unexpected, right? We had this discussion prior and I think it's terrific that we're getting bids in hand in order to make that decision. I think that will help quite a bit with town meeting. I guess I just had two questions. Are there any possible deducts as this moves forward? And then second, do we now think that the four point four five five will be the cap on this? As far as a number, because I know right now it's been floating and estimate and we have bids that are less. And of course, you said sixty percent is still out. Mind you, an election on sixty percent of the vote is still out, right? You can't really call anything. So I'm just wondering if that number that's in our warrant is kind of where you really feel the cap will be and hopefully we'll have bids in hand for less.
I think it's worth just stating that the cap and then maybe the deducts. I think it's too early to rest on it, but I think if there's an indication of the sub bids that, you know, hopefully that is the cap. Recognize that we've got a contingency of about three percent, I think, of the twenty percent in those numbers. That is the escalation. So once that general contracting bid comes in, there is an ever hope that we can actually remove that three percent contingency and come down, which would secure. But until we get those general contracting bids, I think it's pretty hard to to rubber stamp it. But I think the confidence level is up there in terms of that's the number we got to work with.
Yeah, and that's all I'm looking for. It's a degree of confidence that that is the cap. The contingency will come down because you now have much more.
Right. And in terms of deducts, there's no deducts in there. So we we there's nothing we can do really to pull out. It's the alternates that we did. We did the bid alternates, which, you know, knock on wood, again, and maybe I'm going to put the cart before the horse. But I'm hoping that the general contracting bids come in decently. We can take those bid alternates. Because right now, when we see the sub bids, there's room for those alternates to come in, which I think would help the town, like the battery, a bunch of different, you know, a couple of things. So with that said, just make me true is it's there's no deducts that we've got hanging there that we take out.
That's correct. And and we throughout the process had tried to keep the interior fit out. We were constantly talking about value engineering with the architect during the design process. So it's not, it's it's kind of bare bones inside.
Yes, is what it is. Right. Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to just piggyback off that. So hypothetically, if the GC's are on the sixth because they have to be. And then the 11th, we have a meeting. We talk about numbers. And then by town meeting before we close the warrant, would those numbers be the final numbers or possibility that more could come next town meeting in the spring? Or this would be it, like for.
The reality is the numbers are the numbers. They're going to come in. So the general contractor has a number. We take the sub bids, put the whole pack because they'll pick the general contractor will pick those pieces. But long short of it is, let's just say we come in where we need to.
Okay, let's say.
Within the number.
Okay.
There is all, that's why we have contingency built into the project. So if we hit anything, that contingency picks up. But unfortunately, things are things. You never are a hundred percent until the project is done. Just like what's happening with public safety. No one had any idea with with some of that contaminated soil. We don't think there's the issues there with this building. I think we've really tried to go through the fine tooth comb and manage the risks in this particular location and the building that it is. So for all intents purposes, I think the the whole feeling is is that the contingency should be sufficient. Twenty percent for right now. We don't want to go below because it's an older building.
Right.
But there's every intention of taking these bids and what we set as a price and delivering this project within that. But, you know, if there's a catastrophe somewhere or whatever, it's out of our control. Hopefully not. So that's why we never say. But I think we're, I think we're pretty comfortable where where these numbers are sitting. So now we just got to get the general contracting bid and get going.
Okay, sure. Thank you so much, Ms. Raff.
So I just ask you to clarify. Originally, the round number was twenty thousand or twenty million or so. And now we're talking about going back to town meeting for another four and a half, I think. But what I'm, so I just want to make sure that folks at town meeting are going to understand this. Because what I, what I've heard you say so far tonight is that everything looks under budget, but we're asking for more money. So I, so I understand that a lot of costs have gone up. It's been a crazy time. Everyone knows this. Was the original estimate also too low? Or?
Yeah, so.
What precisely is coming under budget and and how are we squaring that for town meeting?
So number one, we'll put out FAQs. I know we're all going to work hard on.
We sent something around, but yeah.
But the history of the project, sort of the timeline of the project is, is when we do feasibility, you have a certain level of knowledge coming out of feasibility, sort of the order of magnitude. Move to design documents, you bring that order of magnitude down and you start to refine the numbers and get more insight. Where things really started to appear was right in the design, tail end of the design documents. And we started the the construction design stuff is costs started to go up because, as we said in the last meeting, I think we had a commentary in in the last select board meeting or it was a chairs or a preview, another forum. Is that we started to see more clarity in the design that revealed more cost requirement. Supply chain issues. So that four and a half number that's been increased, we can provide the documentation. We can go over it now if that's important. It went up. So our context or baseline right now is that new number. So when we say under budget, it's the new number that's slightly coming under budget. Does that make sense? So really what's happened is the file sub bids that are coming in is the new file sub bid budget. Fair enough.
And do we think this is a, I mean, all of this sounds reasonable and explainable. But do we think this is a consequence of having compressed this construction document portion? Like, would we maybe be advised not to do that? I understand that, but if we're going to have realistic expectations of what projects are going to cost, is that where?
It's a, it's a great question, but actually the compressing, because we wanted to get the numbers and the architect could do it. Compression is actually was good in relative terms for this because it exposed more of the detail and got the construction documents out there sooner, so to speak. I don't advise the compression all the time. I mean, I think that when we talked about it June, I think it might have been, and we've talked about it in the committee. I think folks are a little hesitant to do compression, but I think in this instance, when we talked to B H and A and others, you'll keep me honest. Is that, you know, there was, there was a level of of understanding that we could do it. But nothing's perfect until you're finished, unfortunately. But I think it did help in this instance. But there wasn't an additional cost that could have incurred during compression, if that makes sense to you. So all the effort that was done to do it did not escalate the cost right now to the project.
I was just wondering if if you're saying that the detail is revealed during that phase and that phase is shorter. But that's what the bids are based on. I'm wondering if that has any impact.
That's why we're keeping the contingency.
I I think from our professional estimators, where we have been targeting three, maybe four percent escalation year to year, they were seeing ten to twelve percent escalation. They were seeing three to four percent every quarter in the bidding market during the last two years. And there's no way we control that. That's what the marketplace is. Now fortunately, inflation seems to be stabilizing. But that's the the contractors have to look to buy out the project. And so they're kind of thinking a year or at least eight or nine months down from the start of construction to the time when they're actually, you know, buying certain portions of the project. So that that we we tried to take out as much risk as possible by eliminating eliminating those liquidated damages. And instead put in an actual damages clause.
Sure. I just, I just wanted to say that I think that understanding some of that will be really important to town meeting. Because no matter what it is, price increases, we hear this all the time, supply chain, inflation, blah, blah, blah. They're going to want to know that this was all well thought through, which of course it is. But understanding and articulating the steps that you go through to get there, I think, is really reassuring to them, given that we're now coming back again.
Yeah, I was going to ask a process question about the compressing the schedule. If there were any cautionary tales you learned, would you do it again? And then my next question is about the elevators, but any, any cautionary tales?
No, I mean, I think that that we've been through enough processes and we look to the professionals to help us understand if we compress them. You know, and that's why we went back to B H and A and others and and, you know, asked if we could do it. We wouldn't advise it as a standard process, especially on older buildings. Because there is, there is a bit of of detail that that deserves, you know, an eye and a look at it. But so there was nothing that we looked back that I don't think Hank that that through the process. But all of a sudden we tripped up on something and oh, boy, do we have to go do some rework. I think what we've done is we've, we just continue to peel the onion back as we go on that design.
It it meant the architects didn't get much of a summer vacation.
And the other issue, the elevator, so no bids on the elevator. So explain once again, where do we go?
Yeah, yeah, good, yeah.
It's actually not unusual. We only had one prequalified elevator subcontractor. We put it out a second time. We only got that same one. So the bidding law in the Commonwealth. And then when we we put out the bid documents, we didn't get any bids. So what happens now, according to the bidding law, is that we just assign that scope to the general contractor. And the general contractor then can go and select any elevator company as long as they are D C A M certified and they have update, an appropriate update statement. So it's very likely that we'll see that same elevator. Who got prequalified but didn't submit a bid. It's unfortunately, it's one of the hiccups that we run into often.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board? Any other questions or comments?
Just thank you for.
Yeah, just want to thank you all for coming in and providing the update. Sounds good. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great night, Hank.
Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda, we have select board taking positions on the warrant articles. And we're going to turn that over to the town manager, Kate Fitzpatrick.
Very much. Just to follow up on the the previous discussion, I think the conversation about how to prepare information for town meeting is really important. And, you know, it strikes me, this is the time of year when staff can't remember what year it is because it's twenty two, but we're in FY twenty three and we're doing a budget for FY twenty four. So last August is when essentially the budget for the Emory Grover was put in the capital plan. And I don't think anybody really saw this coming. I think so. I think we need to, as you point out, show the calendar of, you know, when that is done. And, you know, we were looking at three percent or whatever and it's now ten. It's nobody, I I didn't see this level of inflation coming. Dave Davidson probably did.
Dave sees it all.
So Mr. Vice Chair, there are a few items that I have some updates on and are a few items that would be ready if the board wants to take a position. On Articles one and two, we continue to meet with those units. So I would expect those to come up at your meeting on October 11th.
Okay.
On Article three, this is ready and I would just if I will, I will attempt to do this one justice. We are looking for an increase in the debt service budget for excluded debt and approximately a hundred and sixty eight thousand. And the reason that we're seeking the funding for this line is that our assistant town manager, finance director, was able to borrow early before the rates went up and save the project about eight million dollars in interest. So it's a good trade. I wish you were here to explain it better than I am sure. You can ask him if you have questions. But this is, even though it is a a request for an increase, it is a very good story. And we can outline that more for you at a future time. So this one is ready if you want to take a position.
Should I move that we recommended option of Article three?
We have a second. All right. As I hear none, we'll come to the vote. All those in favor is aye. All those opposed? All right, we vote in favor to support Article three.
Eight million dollars. Wow.
Wow.
Can hear more about that. Okay. Under for four, the sewer enterprise fund budget. We, when we go to print for the warrant, we use the proposed budget from the M W R A. The actual assessment for M W R A is sixty one thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars lower. So we're asking the board and town meeting to change the sewer assessment. Also, good news.
Then that one is good to go. Do we have a motion?
Move that we recommend adoption, Article four.
Second, discussion. Hearing none, we come to the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That is unanimous.
Article Five is also ready, amend the F Y 2023 Water Enterprise Fund Budget. This is a change to the salary and wages line item in the amount of 10,778 to account for salary increases for non-union personnel, which were set after town meeting.
All right. And that one is all said. Do we have a motion?
Move that we recommend adoption of Article Five. Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That is unanimous. Article Five.
Article Six, appropriate for transportation improvement fees. These are the funds that we receive for Uber and Lyft and similar ride share, indicating the number of rides that Needham, Needhamites that originated in Needham. These, and.
Okay.
We received 95, 107 dollars and 40 cents. We received 10 cents of the 20 cent fee.
10 cents of this 20 cents. Okay.
Glad to contribute any way that I can.
That's 90, 95,000 rides, I think.
Good job.
Move, we recommended adoption of Article Six.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That is unanimous.
Under Article Seven, the Climate Action Planning Committee that the board created last fall has been working very hard under volunteer labor and staff assistance to begin the drafting of the climate action plan that the board adopted as a goal. They have determined that consulting services is needed to help them write that. I, I wholeheartedly agree that that's the case. We were thinking about putting this in the budget in F Y 23, but we felt that it was important that the committee get constituted and meet and, and really have a sense of, of what they wanted in the report and where the gaps were. And I think they've come, they've come to that point and they are seeking $55,000, which we recommend that the board recommended town meeting to be raised from the tax levy.
And that one is good to go.
It is.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Um, actually, Mr. Chair, is, is there a, a schedule? I thought they were going to come in to.
They are coming in on the 11th. Yeah.
Okay, can we wait until?
We'll move that to the October 11th meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Um, the Article Eight, amend the bylaws for regulations for brew club and microbrewery, which as the board recalls was a goal of the boards.
Yes.
You met with the planning board and asked them to get to this point, which they had. The board, uh, over the summer in anticipation of this potential zoning passing, updated its alcohol regulations to appropriately regulate brew pubs and microbreweries. And this would be ready to, we do not have them scheduled because you had met with them and it was your request.
I move that we recommend adoption of Article Eight.
Do we have a second? Uh, discussion. Hearing none, uh, we come to the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That is unanimous.
Under Article Nine, the update is the bids on this project are due Thursday, so it probably does make sense to wait. Um, I will say that we are proposing that it be transferred from the overlay surplus. This is a project, it's been, it's been proposed and withdrawn and brought to several town meetings. We brought it, it was proposed for May of 21. We pushed it off to get more information to the fall of 21. We did get bids and all the average of the bids was about 225,000 dollars over because both inflationary pressure, but you, you will recall that this is a project where the P P B C was concerned about what the contingencies might be. There is underground infrastructure that has to be removed. The original project budget was in the 800,000 dollar range. So I think that's something the board has been discussing about, you know, the, these projects and, and the, the difficulty of estimating them. So I think it makes sense to wait to have bids in hand, but it is good to go to town meeting with that.
Right, so there's a possibility that it could be more than the 225 is what you're saying?
That's, I hope not.
Oh, yeah, I know. I hope, yes, I hope not, but I know you said prior.
I did, Hank did notify me that I believe there were four or five people who attended the pre-bid. So that's great for this project. And it, it's also thought that the fall/winter timeline, um, you know, when projects are ending. So we're hoping that that, it's also pretty much only a demolition. So there's not a lot of, there's not as much supply chain involved in demolition. We'll hold that one.
Yes.
And then, um, obviously the 10th.
Hold, move the 10th to the 11th.
Um, on property acquisition, this is the Castle Farm Foster Property. The developer, Jack Dolly from North Land Residential would be coming on the 11th. So I think that makes sense to wait as well.
It's going to be a fun meeting.
There are a lot of, we may need dinner.
No, no, we will need dinner. I'll say.
Article 12, I did hand out the final numbers. There, this is rescinding the debt authorization to the Jack Cogswell Building. This is an item from the 2018 Annual Town Meeting, which in the, the general fund was authorized 3.503 million, which we're proposing to rescind 2.2 million. Now, this was a project that was built at the exact right time.
Yeah, I say so.
The total project cost, the total appropriation in 2018 was 7.6 million. 1.3, 1.4 was free cash. And then there was 944,000 from sewer retained earnings and 1.8 ish from water retained earnings. So it was a combined funding project. So the general fund is, we're able to rescind the 2.2 million. So that's very helpful.
Absolutely.
And it has a positive effect on the financing plan that the finance director was putting together. Yeah, great, great job on that project. 2018 was the peak, good time for data.
Absolutely, that is good to hear.
So that one is ready if you're interested in taking it.
Do we have a motion?
True, recommend the option of Article 12.
Second, you have a discussion. Other than that, it's, it's really amazing that we're coming in at that number and rescinding that. Hearing none, we'll come to the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote is unanimous.
And finally, I think for tonight, the Capital Improvement Fund, which you heard the great description of, which I can't believe it's been about 15 years since we set it up. We are proposing 351,662 and the, reflecting the amounts of surplus vehicles that we have been able to get receipts for. As Dave mentioned, the fund has 1.1 million in it now.
That one is ready.
I move that we recommend adoption of Article 13. Second.
Open up for discussion.
So where has that, those, um, those sales, I thought you said had taken place over the course of many years. So where, where has that money been hanging out?
It's a great question. So we use the sales, again, he corrected me now. We use the sales as a proxy for what we're recommending to put in. It is coming from the tax levy. So it came in and over those couple of years, there's no mechanism to reserve it. And then unless the money, unless you had it and you could do it before you set the tax rate in October and they come in all, all during the year.
Is that, is that fair?
That's correct. And also anticipation of sales, which will be reflected on the tax recap that will be voted on.
So sales that we already know about for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks.
Did we vote on that?
Okay, just, all right. We'll come to the vote, to the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote is unanimous.
And finally, Article 14, authorizing the community energy aggregation. The Climate Action Planning Committee is coming, so we should wait on that one as well.
Okay. They're going to talk about both of.
They are.
Those articles. Okay, perfect.
So under the next item, Mr. Vice Chair, I only have two things to report. Uh, the first is we talked about the acquisition of the parcel on Charles River Street. We are organizing for the benefit of town meeting members of boards and committees tours of the property in October. So that will be coming out soon, a week, the two weekends leading up to town meeting, one Saturday and one Sunday. So we'll be getting that out so people can come. We do expect quite a few people to want to go and walk those.
Looking forward to that.
Yep. It's great.
Do we know which, which dates are set or?
The Sunday, the 16th is the Sunday.
Okay.
So it'll be the afternoon of the 16th and the morning of the Saturday, which is the 22nd.
Yeah, got it.
Roughly like two o'clock on the.
All right.
16th and 10 o'clock on the 22nd. So that makes sense. Hopefully you have that correctly. Uh, I did not check.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the 16th maybe.
But there are two options.
Yeah, there are two options, which is good.
And just the last thing, um, our friends in Needham Market took the trouble to mail to us in great bubble wrap. Um, a proclamation reflecting the, um, the ascension of Charles III to, to be king. God save the king. I think this is just amazing. They were, you know, just last meeting, I was showing you right at, right, seriously, the week, right? But, um, or right after Queen Elizabeth died. So, um, yes, it's very interesting. We'll hang it proudly and, uh, and we have to think of something to send them that's. Take some pictures at the farm.
Yes. That's very nice.
All right. Exactly for your, all right, thank you so much, town manager. So the next thing we have for poor discussion is next gen item, select board goal setting of F Y 23 and 24. And we're going to go over the statement or suggestions.
Mr. Chair, I think that the board has.
We're good after we last meeting. I think we talked a couple of times about this.
We'll start moving ahead once you take your vote.
All right. Uh, do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll say, uh, suggest motion, the board vote to adopt the fiscal year 2023, 2024 goal statement.
We have a second.
Second.
All right. Open for discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to, of course, I'm going to vote, uh, these goals tonight. I just wanted to comment, you know, we had a lot of discussion during those meetings and some of these goals, you know, um, I know we're going to explore. I'm not completely in favor of some of them, like maybe other members of this board aren't in favor of some of the other ones. So as we move forward, I'm just looking to get more information. But tonight supporting this to, to move forward and, uh, we'll see where everything comes out and watch.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Riley. And absolutely, we're going to get as much information as possible as we look to move forward on some of these goals or, or not.
Yep.
Um, so thank you for that.
Terrific, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so here's, I hear none. We come to the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposes? All right, the guys have it, that's unanimous. Next up.
I'm not very excited. I know.
So do we have any committee reports? Anything that we've had since the last couple of weeks? I know. This Thursday, but yeah.
Yeah, actually the, the housing plan working group has somewhat delayed their community involvement meeting.
Yes.
Because there's just, this is an enormous document that has, uh, information coming in from many different subgroups. And the collating and digesting of that is just going to take a little bit longer before we can take it out to public. So I think that meeting, the community involvement meeting or maybe not the name, but, um, will take place in November instead of October.
We do have a joint meeting with the planning board coming up though in.
October 11th.
October 11th. Another grief.
It's going to be.
That is going to be a long meeting.
Them taking it dinner orders.
Taking orders. Thank you so much.
Holy smokes.
Kate, we appreciate that.
You don't cook.
I do not cook often, but when I do, I warm things up. So I feel like that's not terrible. All right, so I believe that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to, um, say you did a terrific job tonight. And I mean that, I know I've been in your shoes before you step in, um, for some, for Ms. Cooley, who's not here for the chair. And you're on an efficient meeting and I know it's difficult. It looks, it looks easy sometimes, but I know there's a lot going on. And I just wanted to say congratulations on your first chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. And I will never say that it looks easy. I will never say that ever. Um, I'm still sweating, but it is, uh, it is good. I'm so happy that we got through this and I appreciate all of the involvement from the town and all the working Needham channel. Mary, Kristen, everybody, um, for helping out Katie, Dave, Miles, everyone, much appreciated. And yeah, so I think we are coming to the conclusion of this meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Absolutely not. All right, that is unanimous.